Thank you.
All right, let's try this again. Good afternoon. The time is 12:01 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum attending in person. Notice of this meeting has been posted online and at the Fort Bend ISD Administration Building for at least 72 hours. It is now time for public comment. The Board encourages and welcomes comments and input from our patrons. Please limit your comments to three minutes and please refrain from mentioning a student or employee's name when voicing a concern or complaint as board policy provides alternative procedures through the grievance process policies GF Local or DGBA Local to seek resolution to complaints. The Superintendent's Office, Human Resources, and the Administration in general can assist you in finding those procedures online. The following procedures will apply to this afternoon's audience comments. I will read the name of the person registered to speak and share that they have three minutes to make their comments. Once the speaker starts their comments, the Board Secretary, Dr. Shirley Rose Gilliam, will announce when they have 30 seconds remaining. Once the three-minute time limit has expired and whether the speaker has concluded their comments, Dr. Shirley Rose Gilliam will announce that the speaker's time has elapsed. I then ask you to return to your seats so that the next speaker may have their three minutes to address the board. If addressing the board virtually, you will be removed from the meeting immediately following the expiration of your allotted three minutes. Thank you. We have two speakers this afternoon. I'd like to welcome Glenda McCall, please.
Okay, there we go. Good afternoon, Dr. Whitbeck, Trustees and Central Admin. My name is Glenda Guzman-McCall and I am the President of Fort Bend American Federation of Teachers. I'm here today to thank you for considering additional compensation for our teachers and our staff, but I want to be sure that that consideration is fair and respectful. Since the end of the school year, my office has received 40 cancellations due to teachers over 40 leaving the district. That's unprecedented and reflects only the members who have thought to reach out to us to tell us they're leaving. This means unprecedented numbers of employees from Fort Bend must be leaving. We don't have those numbers because admin won't share that information openly, as I'm sure would cause concern publicly. But based on what I've seen personally and the conversations I'm having with those leaving, and rest assured, I'm trying to get them not to leave because that hurts us as much as it hurts you, I can tell you that they're leaving because they do not feel respected. They're not respected in the classroom because of the lack of support, extreme workloads, extreme discipline issues not covered by admin, and unrealistic expectations. But mostly, they're leaving because Fort Bend has failed to show them that they care about these issues and failed to show that they appreciate teachers by compensating them properly. They see what other districts are doing and have decided they would rather go work for a district that shows them appreciation. That's if they already haven't decided that they want to leave all education altogether. So let's look at what other districts are doing. HISD, 11% raise for teachers and 12% for paraprofessionals, plus a $5,000 retention bonus paid over three years. The starting salary of $61,500 compared to our $59,500. Support staff, HISD, 6% to 16% increase according to their pay scale and a $2,000 bonus. ALIF increased their starting salary $60,000 and will be giving a $2,000 retention stipend. Alden ISD increased its teacher salary to $61,000, increasing by $3,000 and giving them $1,500, $3,000, and $5,000 respectfully to the teachers according to their years of service. And support staff is 3% plus a $1,500 retention bonus. Cyver increased to $2,000 to $65,000 with $1,000 stipend and $2,000 stipend to paraprofessionals and support staff. Fort Bend must do better. We must. Our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and our support staff deserve it. Most of all, our kids deserve it. We can't afford to let our great teachers leave and let our babies down. Please do the right thing.
30 seconds.
Let's compensate, let's start with compensation that starts at $60,000 at least and give our teachers and paraprofessionals at least a $3,000 retention bonus. That's fair. Then maybe, just maybe, we might be able to get some of those teachers back. Our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. The next speaker is Michelle Menon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak with you. You know my name and you know my story. I've worked for Fort Bend ISD for 20 years now. You have made ways to increase wages beyond the inflation rate for those who are new to teaching or new to our district. But what about me? Where do I fit into these increases? Nowhere. Year after year, new teachers with no experience get salaries that are closer and closer to the one that I have on day one. What does the campus and the district expect of me and other vets? We do more lessons and more paperwork while the new teachers are learning what to do. We use conference time before and after school, helping other teachers who need help. We are the ones who get multiple clubs or committees because we're experienced and we make it look so easy. We help mentor teachers who have been switched to a whole new department. We are the ones who are moved from grade to grade each year because we are good or we have the right credentials. The last time I worked, the same position for two or more years was in 2017. Do you know what that means? It means it will take me another half a year to figure out what that role really is and to learn the new information. And then, don't forget, I need to buy materials and extra things that make it memorable for my students. So I just want to let you know that my husband and I were honored yesterday. Yesterday, the Goodwill Agency called our house and they told us that we were going to be able to adopt three brand-new, very beautiful girls. One, we have Jenny here from Houston, and Kelly is from Korea, and Anaya is from Zambia. We have a multicultural house and classroom so that we can connect with all of our little cousins in the room. They did tell me that they would call to let me know when we have a brother available for them. These are the kinds of things, along with everything that comes with them, that makes these classrooms memorable when we don't have the sources coming in from the district. My name is Michelle Menon. Please respect me and what I do because I am worth more and more each year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Menon. We're going to move on to the action item. Action A, Consideration of a Resolution Regarding a Retention and Recruitment Supplement for Designated Employees. May I get a motion?
Motion.
I move to approve the motion. Try again.
I move to approve consideration of a resolution regarding a retention and recruitment supplement for designated employees.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? And first, I'm going to read the resolution and then if... Oh, yes. And Dr. Whitbeck will speak first and then I'll read the resolution and then we can have discussion.
Thank you. And thank you to our board for being willing to attend especially called meeting and for your patience with our team as we have worked so diligently for months to analyze our financial situation, to bring it to the boardroom in a very transparent manner. And we all appreciate that. We did have a new consideration that really became possible within just this last week as our team was finalizing the end-of-year budget, which ends actually today on June 30th each year. And I want to stop and I want to thank Brian Gwynne, Kelly Schlecks, Luis Asorio, and Steve Bassett because they worked throughout the weekend to try to crunch numbers, to literally look at what is possible for us to do, if anything. And of course, it's been our will and your will to take care of our employees to the maximum extent that we can. So I do want to thank them for that. At the end of the year reconciliation, some expenses from the ESER funds came in less than anticipated, and that allowed us approximately $2 million to use for possible supplemental pay. $2 million in a three-quarter of a billion-dollar budget is not as much as we would like, but it is something. And so I want to remind everyone that we are dealing with a $50 million budget deficit. And I'm going to be honest, I did not make the decisions that led to that budget deficit, but I am here to be a problem solver, to own it, and to work with our board to get this ship righted so that Fort Bend goes in the right direction, and I'm committed to that. The decisions to use supplemental pay are challenging, and I already can see and I predict that no matter what we do, we will be criticized. And so we face the challenge, do we do anything or do we try to do something? And that is the dilemma of the day. So we asked Human Resources to identify for us the greatest areas where vacancies are higher than normal and where the applicant pool is more shallow than normal. And based on that information and combined with your efforts as a board to focus on safety and health, we have a recommendation. And it does not cast a net across the district, nor does it reach every employee. It simply cannot for $2.1 million. So we're literally faced of the point, do we do something or do we do nothing? And that is, as our team deciphered the options, we felt that it is better to do something. So I want to share one example connected to an area that you will hear in the resolution that is recommended. So one, and that is the area of special education. And so as a teacher and a principal at all three levels, I know firsthand what it's like day-to-day in the schools. And as I did my one-on-ones with each principal and as we listened to the teacher feedback where we had 3,800 comments, special education rose to the top of the highest concerns. And so when we look at that, we know that when special education children's needs are being met, the school runs smoother. All teachers and principals benefit from that because children's needs are being met and we have the appropriate programs in place to meet their needs. So as a reminder, you as a board, even in a budget deficit, approved 27 additional positions in special ed, which is allowing us to open up more units to serve our most severe children. This is a request from our teachers. And so that is a part of that, aside from the supplement, that I do want to mention. So as of today, the amount saved by staffing to the letter and by absorbing positions at the central office level has now risen to $15 million. We are committed to continuing to analyze every vacancy, every contract that's up for renewal, and every program to determine whether it's efficient, and that will continue as we go forward. So part of our focus today is health and safety, and our recommendation is a one-time supplement to be paid on September 15th, 2022, and supplements paid to new recruits in the same areas up until December 31st, 2022. And those are for the following positions. And I know those will be reiterated in the resolution. Police officers, registered nurses, licensed LVNs, special education teachers, special education aides, bus drivers, and bus monitors. And I ask for everyone's support that the net cannot cast as wide as I know this board wants it, and I know how I feel and our team feels, and we want to give more and more. So my commitment is we will continue to dig under every rock. We will continue to seek better ways to take care of our people while we're dealing with a $50 million budget deficit. But our commitment is we do respect our teachers, we do respect our employees, and we care. And so I bring that to you, Madam President, for the resolution.
Dr. Whitbeck, thank you very much, and thank you very much to all of the staff for your countless hours in making this a possibility. So I will now read the resolution and open it up to the board for discussion. Resolution for Fort Bend Independent School District regarding retention and recruitment supplemental pay. Whereas the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees acknowledges that retention of committed employees and recruitment of qualified applicants is necessary to promote employee morale and ensure that the district delivers a quality educational system for all students. And whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kristi Whitbeck, and her administration explored whether an increase in compensation was fiscally possible for the 2022-23 school year. And whereas the Board and Superintendent are committed to the health, safety, and security of students and staff as the district's first priority. And whereas the Superintendent has examined available funds and identified approximately $2.1 million in elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds that are available to provide a supplemental payment. And whereas the Superintendent has reviewed employment vacancies in designated positions where current vacancies are greater than in recent years and current applicants are less than in recent years. And whereas the Superintendent recommends paying a one-time retention supplement to current employees in designated positions, police officers, special education teachers, special education paraprofessionals, registered nurses, licensed vocational nurses, bus drivers, and bus monitors. And whereas the Superintendent recommends offering a one-time recruitment incentive for persons hired as police officers, special education teachers, special education paraprofessionals, registered nurses, licensed vocational nurses, bus drivers, and bus monitors hired after June 30th, 2022, but before December 31st, 2022. And whereas the Board acknowledges this retention and recruitment pay is subject to all legal deductions and is not considered TRS-eligible. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Fort Bend Independent School District hereby authorizes the Superintendent to pay a retention supplement to current employees in designated positions as follows. Number one, $1,000 for full-time or part-time benefits eligible employees in designated positions, police officers, special education teachers, special education paraprofessionals, registered nurses, and licensed vocational nurses. Number two, $500 for full-time benefits eligible bus drivers and bus monitors. And number three, $250 for part-time bus drivers. Be it further resolved that this supplement will be paid on September 15th, 2022, or if the employee is hired after September 5th, 2022, the supplement will be paid in the new employee's first paycheck. And eligibility for this payment requires the following. Number one, current full-time or part-time employment as a police officer, special education teacher, special education paraprofessional, registered nurse, licensed vocational nurse, bus driver, or bus monitor. Temporary employees and substitutes are not eligible for this payment. Or, number two, a new employee hired as a police officer, special education teacher, special education paraprofessional, registered nurse, licensed vocational nurse, bus driver, or bus monitor before December 31st, 2022. Number three, an employee may not receive more than one retention or recruitment payment during fiscal year 2022-23. Adopted by the Board of Trustees of Fort Bend Independent School District on this 30th day of June 2022. Certificate for resolution. I hereby that the foregoing resolution was presented to the Board of Trustees of the Fort Bend Independent School District during a special called meeting on June 30th, 2022. A quorum of the Board of Trustees was present and was duly moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted, and such resolution was then adopted according to the following vote. It is now open for discussion. Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So just want to commend Dr. Whitbeck and the leadership team. This is a result of a lot of hard work, the $15 million save that you mentioned. I know that that hasn't been easy, and so I commend all the hard work that's gone into that. And I think it's worth mentioning that everybody in the room would prefer for this to be that wide net that you spoke about. And so with the choice between doing nothing or doing this in a way that helps us to retain and fill the health and safety positions and those hard-to-fill positions and the special ed positions, I'm excited about this. I think this is great news for the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to also reiterate what trustee Hamilton said. Thank you to the staff for working very hard, working around the clock. I know it hasn't been easy, been on the phone with Dr. Whitbeck, just hearing how hard everybody's been working and putting our heads together. I know we're in a very difficult situation with the budget deficit. Originally, we weren't able to offer anything, so, you know, at this point, we have some very hard areas that need to be filled. My wife teaches at Bowie and there's a huge, huge gap in the sped department over there. A lot of positions are open. A lot of, beginning of the year last year, bus drivers, huge issue, if everybody remembers. So being able to do something, it is, I'm sad that we're not able to offer it for everyone, but I do want the public to know that this isn't the end. This is only the beginning. And Dr. Whitbeck has only been here, this is just finishing her first year, probably not even a year yet. So the time that I've been here, and I haven't been here very long, I've seen some amazing things. I've been very inspired by the work that you've all been putting in. I'm grateful that we have such a good team in place. And I know that when I get home, I'll hear about it. My wife's a teacher. But when she gets the contract and she signs it and she doesn't even question what the pay is going to be, I know pay is very important, but she loves her job, she loves where she's at, and a lot of teachers do. They love their job, they love what they do, and they do it for the kids. And I understand that pay is very, very important, and we will get there. So it is a mountain we have to climb, but we are going to climb it, and we're doing it. And I'm witnessing that we're doing it right now. It might not take, we're not getting it done as quickly as we can, but we're going to get it done, and we're committed to it. And I just want to let everybody know that that's where we're headed. So thank you all again for all of your hard work, and that's it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Dr. Gilliam?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to start by saying, again, I'm going to give recognition to the E-Team. I know, and to Dr. Whitbeck, I know there are seven of us on this board, and I can assure you, I'm going to talk about me because I can talk for myself, okay? This was a very, very hard thing to do. I have here, Mr. Bassett, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for leading as our deputies, and all of the E-Team and all of the questions. And I can assure you that there are many, many questions where it came from the Board of Trustees. I think it's okay for me to say that. And we, I had many, many tough questions. And when we come to this point, and it's when we're dealing with budgets and numbers and things that are just there and they're not there, and then you have to go and look, and a budget is a budget. And you have to, I don't know, they're different, we scrub it. I think that's what you said, Mr. Bassett, we've got to scrub here and scrub there, and it's sort of like even with our budgets at home, I'm going to talk about me again. You know, I'm like, where did this go? Where did that go? We had this issue, we had that issue. There was a lot that went through that in the past, and I'm going to say it, I've been here since 2022 of December, and not all spending was good spending. Planning wasn't necessarily great planning. So what happens is that now we come to June 30th, 2022, and there are so many things that we want to do as a board, there are so many things that I'm, and I will share that I know Dr. Whitbeck wants to do, but I am going to share this. She, you never stopped. She never stopped. She's like, we have to do, we have to do, we have to do. And I do want folks to know, I want our public to know, our community to know, that making or taking care, we've heard it loud and clear, taking care of our employees was number one. And we're not done. We're still working. We're still working, but today, this is what we can do. So I'm going to ask our community, our teachers, our administrators, all employees in the district, you know, hang tight, and I'll do that in quotes. We understand, we hear, and there are many times that, there are so many things that we want, and sometimes each of us have different things that we want. We hear different stories, we hear, and most of, and when I say stories, there's a lot of conversation that is going on, different ideas, and every idea that comes my way, and I know for me, I'm thinking, okay, well, how can we work that? How can we do this? How can we do that? But when you have purse strings that are tied, there's, in the clothes, there's not a lot that we can do, but we can do something. I am going to ask our employees to hang with us. I can assure you that we're not quiet back here. We're in Dr. Whitbeck's ear all the time. I even give her a break. I'm like, okay, well, I talked to her yesterday. I'm going to give her a break for the next day. I'm sure that she'll have three other board members calling her and giving her ideas. I can't even imagine because I would probably have another cell phone, to be honest, but... And I'm saying that lightly, and there's nothing light about this. This is a hard time. And I want employees to know that in being in schools and seeing, and I do a lot of consulting work, I see what's going on. I understand it. And it makes, for me, it makes me more of an advocate to change some stuff. But change is hard, as we all know about a baby, even a baby has an issue with being changed, but you got to do it. So please, please understand that we really are at a place where some things can change, and we have to change. We have to turn the corner. And I'm saying this, and it's, I didn't have anything prepared, I'm just, you know, I'm feeling it too, because when I'm hearing it, I'm feeling it too. But the one thing that I want, that I would like to make sure that our community understands is that there is a lot of work put into this today. When Dr. Whitbeck says it was the weekend, I know it was the weekend. And then if you can imagine an E-Team working through things and trying to bring something, if anything, what, can I have what? And you know, Dr. Whitbeck is kind of high-strung too, you know, I can just admit, I'm sorry, y'all. I know she was like, oh my God. No, I'm sorry. It's all good. But I'm saying that to bring just a little bit of light to the situation. However, it was done, and we're going to keep working exceptionally hard as your board. And I know with the E-Team, I have been very impressed with what they have been able to do. And not only that, with Dr. Whitbeck coming through and just thought processes and, okay, well, what if we do this and what if we do that? So there's hours of work behind this. And Dr. Whitbeck, thank you for you and your team for where we are right now and where we're going to be because we're going to be somewhere, and we're going to get it together. It just takes time. And I appreciate your patience with me today while my thought process works. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. Mrs. Hannon?
Thank you, Mrs. Malone. So I want to reiterate what Dr. Whitbeck said, that she came to this district, you know, inheriting a $50 million budget deficit. And, you know, when I think about, you know, a And, you know, when I think about, you know, a good coach, you, you hire a good coach, and they come in, and they, they maybe inherit a team that hasn't won in years and years, right? And, and they're not going to win the state title, they're not going to win the state title that year either, because it's going to take a while to get that team where they need to be. And so Dr. Whitback is our coach, and she's got a unique situation in that she has, she has a Fort Bend ISD team, and that includes, that includes my daughter, and that includes all of her teachers and her principal, and every principal and teacher and para and bus driver and nurse and custodian and police officer. It includes everybody in this district. And so, you know, part of me, I, I take issue a little bit sometimes with that team of eight idea, because it's not just those of us sitting up here, it's the E-Team out there, it's every employee and every kid in this district. And, and I know that I ask very hard questions, because I'm asking, because a whole lot of the team doesn't get heard. And, and I agree that something is better than nothing. And what we're working with, with the budget deficit, when you can find $2.1 million, I understand that that net can't go very wide. But I'm also hopeful, right, that, that as we remember those charts and graphs that we've been looking at, where, where we're getting a little outpaced in pay scale, I'm hoping that, that, that as the staff out there works harder to look at efficiencies based on that new board goal we have about utilizing human resources and material resource and all of those kinds of things, and I know you are doing that. And this morning, I watched a webinar hosted by Raise Your Hand Texas about teacher recruitment and retention, and, you know, heard some, some strategies that, that might be hopeful for us to think about, but it's, it's just a challenge. And so I, I just, you know, I appreciate the difficulty that the E-Team faces when deciding, do we give, do we give to some, or do we give to none, right? That's a hard decision. And I want the public, and I want the teachers to know that, that we respect you, I respect you, and, you know, I just, I think we need to continue to be very financially prudent and looking very carefully, not just at our staff, because sometimes we need staff where the, the student-teacher ratio may not make sense, but we need to look at our spending, we need to look at our, our programming, and, and some of those things that got us into the $50 million deficit. So thank you, Mrs. Malone, for having, letting me just voice my thoughts on, on where we are. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hanen, for your thoughts and statements, we appreciate it. Ms. Williams, do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Day is unable to attend, however, she sent me a statement that she asked me to read, so I'm going to do so. Hi, everyone, this is Judy Day. I am currently out of the country, and my internet connection is very unreliable. I wrote this statement in case I can't join the meeting online today. I understand I can't cast my vote, but I would like to share my thoughts. For the past few months, we have heard and discussed the FBISD financial situation many times. We also received many concerns and expectations on salary raises and bonuses for our staff. There is no doubt that we will have more discussions on these topics in the near future, but we are here today for a different reason. I believe Dr. Whitback and the team have worked very hard and diligently on the resolution to best use the limited funding FBISD can spare at this time. When I went through the details in the resolution, I realized that we are having to make very difficult choices. Please allow me to share my thought process by using a metaphor. I pictured the following. Parents of a big family need to make financial decisions with a limited budget. As parents, we love and care about all of our children the same. We want to make all of them happy and satisfy their needs, but sometimes we have to make difficult choices when we don't have the money to meet those requests. In those difficult times, we will have to prioritize the funds according to the greatest needs. This is how I see what we are doing today. I appreciate and trust the professional judgment of Dr. Whitback and her team, and I believe the resolution is the best use of the funds we can spare at this moment. For these reasons, I support this resolution. Thank you to Ms. Malone for reading my statement. Sincerely, Judy Day. So I want to thank Ms. Dave for providing her input and, and sharing her perspective. And I'd like to speak too now. And I just want to say, safety matters. Our people matter. Yet, we must be fiscally prudent and responsible with our taxpayer funds, and yes, we wish there was more. We're in the situation we are in, and Dr. Whitback meant, mentioned turning over those rocks one by one. And I'll mention something that my mom always said growing up, Rome wasn't built in a day. It takes time. We're not going to recover from the losses overnight. We're going to turn every rock, one by one, and keep building until we have Rome built, if you will, or the FBISD the best place in the U.S. to be. We are lifting and rebuilding together, working towards revitalization of this district to provide the best place for our people, whether it's the students, the staff, the E-Team, us, it doesn't really matter, as citizen in the community, you all matter, and we care, and we respect you, and we wish we could do more. However, I want to say thank you so, so much for all of the hard work that Dr. Whitback and her team have been doing. I'm so grateful to do something. It's a heck of a lot better than nothing. And so with that, I just want to say, bear with us, and, and know that we are better together, and we will succeed as one FBISD, working together in collaboration, doing what's best for all kids. Thank you. I believe, do we have any other comments? No. I believe it is now time for us to vote on this resolution. Please vote. Just waiting on the tabulation. Feel like we should do the Jeopardy. All right, this motion carries 6-0. The motion passes and carries. All right, may I get a motion to adjourn, please? I move to adjourn. The time is 12:40 PM, and we are now adjourned.